I will now call the meeting to order the -- this is the time and place set for the March regular meeting of the Royal Planning Commission. I will ask the folks to reintroduce themselves as a new meeting down at this end.
Anne Beeky, good evening.
Charlotte Douglas, City Commissioner.
Tim Twain, Director of Community Development.
Nick Gerchowski, Assistant City Attorney.
Mike Forney, Mayor.
Woody Gantina.
And I'm Chairperson Gary Casada. First order of business is the approval of the minutes from the last meeting. If the commissioners have had a chance to look at the February 14 meeting minutes, if there's comments, corrections, discussion, or a motion.
I'll move to approve the minutes.
Motion to approve. Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Ms. Beeky. Any discussion needed? Seeing none, I'm going to call for the voice vote. All those in favor of approval of the February 14 meeting minutes, say aye. Aye. None opposed. Motion passes. Meeting minutes are approved. All right. Next order of business is, well, before we go to that, does any of the commissioners or staff want to add anything to the agenda? All right, seeing none. Agenda is set, and now is the time for public comment on non-agenda items. If there are people in the audience who want to speak on a matter that is not on the agenda, now is the time. Raise your hand, and I'll call you up if not. All right, seeing none. I'm going to close the public comment, then we'll go to the first order of new business, which is the public hearing on SP 230101. Mr. Twain.
The Planning Commission may recall that you saw this project in front of you at your January meeting where you approved a preliminary PUD development request with some contingencies. Under the ordinance, the developer has six months to bring back revisions for final PUD review. They are doing that this evening. They have made some modifications based on your preliminary approval. Those are indicated in your report very briefly. The petitioner added barrier gates with pedestrian warning lights at the exit driveways to each of the side streets, East Fifth and South Troy. The discussion, and what was put in your motion, was that they be roll-up doors, so there's a little bit of a difference between what was actually in your motion versus what they're proposing at this point. They did add additional solar panels to the roof plan, as well as a photometric plan for the roof was added to the plan sheets. The photometric grid did at the east rear and south property lines show illumination levels that were slightly higher than what's allowed under the zoning ordinance provision, and that's identified as a revision. They also have added an energy consumption report to the materials, and that report indicates the proposed building would consume between 50% and 75% less energy than a similar building meeting those energy standards. Those are the revisions to the plan that you saw in January. If you, after hearing from the petitioner and the public hearing, there are a series of recommendations from staff contained on pages two and three of the report.
All right. Any questions for Mr. Twain? All right, seeing none, I will call the petitioners forth, and please tell us why you're entitled to the relief you seek.
Good evening. My name is Jason Krieger with Project Architects. It's 2120 East Lovemile, Royal Oak. I have Jeff and Tim with ownership here, and then Ray is our project architect. And what we're, I suppose what we're going to do is we're going to focus just on some of the changes briefly, and Tim wants to mention a few things about some of the energy usage of the building, and then we're available for questions and comments. So regarding the roll-down door versus safety gate, we know that that was a motion, and what we completely agreed with was the fact we wanted a safety mechanism. We thought that the door may be a little bit more dangerous because it's completely blocked. Also, it's along the sidewalk, so it might not be as friendly from a pedestrian standpoint. Our proposal was to keep a gate, so it's open, but it'll still block traffic going in and out. It's also similar to what you'd see on, I think, 11 Main. They have that, and also Sixth and Troy, I believe, they have the same thing. So we just thought that would be a better aesthetic for the street, but still achieving the same goal. More solar panels were provided on the roof. These were actually calculated initially. I think we showed some. We didn't have all the calcs. We engaged the engineers, so what you're seeing was actually calculated, and what you see is what you get type of thing. And there's a report that's a little above my head that you can read into, and Tim can speak to that. Regarding the photometric plan, we did provide that. I don't think it was provided initially. There were a couple spots that were over. I think by .1-foot candles, they'll be corrected. We're hoping that that can be handled with city staff if this moves forward. And then as far as the energy consumption, 50 to 75% better than a typical building like this, and again, Tim's here to speak to that. So I'm going to hand this off to Tim. You can take a look.
Good evening, commissioners. I'm Tim with 20 Terra, the developer behind this project. I wanted to give some context to the report that you all issued about the energy usage and help you understand kind of what we did. So we took the building and we built it up to code in our model, and that gave us the baseline of how this building would perform. We then plugged in all the assumptions that we're committing to, the envelope, the air ceiling, the windows, and got this number that was 50, I think, low 50% better than the baseline building. Then with the addition of our solar panels, it's mid to high 70s, the reduction in use. One thing I want to make very clear is that in doing this, a major component was the acumen behavior, which we really couldn't model much lower because we don't have the data. So we couldn't make bold assumptions about that. We wanted to deliver a number that we knew we could hit, that 75% number. In reality, how it would play out was we would collect user data for a year or two, and we would run the programs that we intend to run to incentivize less energy use and try and bring that 75% number actually up to low 80s is a reasonable assumption. But just one thing I want to stress is that we are pulling on every single lever that we know how in designing and building this building, and that's straight out of the ASHRAI Small to Medium Size Apartment Building Net Zero Guide. So everything we know how to do, we're doing. It is largely just kind of a learning experience as we go and collect user data. We can provide more accurate, and in my estimation, better numbers. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone else going to present here from the petitioners? Okay, well, then I guess the question is, does this panel have questions for the petitioners? Or Mr. Twain? Mr. Gantina.
Quick question for you on the panels on the roof. So are you not anticipating any need for any rooftop mechanical equipment? Because I see you've sort of covered the entire roof footprint with photovoltaics, which doesn't really leave any room for anything else. So I'm just wondering if you anticipate the need to maybe scale down on the number of solar panels to accommodate other equipment.
Good question. The answer is no. We have all Vtacs, correct? And the common areas are served with air handlers in the building, right? Is that correct? Yes. So there's nothing else up on the roof.
Now, you probably want to stay there. Up there. Somebody's going to ask questions, good for you. Ms. Beeky.
Good evening. I wasn't able to be here in January, and so I have a couple of different questions. The first question I have is, the argument for this, on this particular configuration with the number of units and such is always an economic issue argument, and I'm wondering if you look at the possibility of doing something that was more appropriate scale given the mixed use, categorization in the other townhouses on Troy a little bit further up, and whether or not that was something that was economically feasible. And I know we talked about feasibility as far as the building, but just whether that option was even looked at is one question. And then my second question, given the building that you have here on the paper, is there any space for like biking parks, parking bikes and that sort of thing to offset people's concerns about driving? So there's two separate questions.
Sure, absolutely. So I can answer the question, or I can answer the part of the question about the design of the building, and then as far as the economics, I would need the developer to answer that. But as far as the design goes, we did look at the building running north and south versus east and west, okay? Left and right versus up down. And when we looked at the north to south direction, it did not work for their energy model nearly as well as it worked the other way. So that's, so in order to make this project work, we had to do that. Regarding the bike parking, Ray, we have bike parking inside, don't we?
Yeah, and I believe we have two bike racks showing next to the...
Two bike racks showing next, and is there parking inside as well?
I don't believe we have that programmed yet, but we can put that in the...
Okay, sure. Are we meeting the ordinance?
Yeah.
Okay. As far as economics, Tim, on the...
Good evening. My name is Jeff Julius. I'm also with 20 Terra, the developer on the project. When it came to looking at the best way to lay out this particular site, we did investigate multiple different options, and townhouse style, walk-up style, or kind of California style apartments where it was two floors with outdoor railing and no common space. We looked at multiple different options, and for us to hit our energy, kind of our goals from the energy reduction, it required us to kind of to scale it to the size to help offset some of those additional costs.
All right. You have follow-up?
I just want to, I guess my question was more about the size on the lot, not so much the energy reduction, but I just wanted to make that comment. I don't need an answer necessarily, but I also wanted to say that I did listen to the entire discussion from January to make sure I was up to speed. So I did hear the discussion, and I guess, well, I'll leave it. With the embodied energy, you talked a lot about the usage energy, but not the embodied energy and the full cycle of net zero, and so I just think that's something for all of us to take into consideration. Because again, if you're going to take the building down, if the materials are not reused, you know, using the existing building and maybe adding on to it, or making something more creative that way from an energy perspective, might have a better outcome overall. And so I just wanted to comment, because you talked about the building after it's built, but not the materials that go into it, or the materials that will be removed from the existing building.
All right, Mr. Gantina.
So I've got a couple things, just to echo what Ms. Beeky just said. I think any buildings that would need to come down for this particular project, I would encourage you to look into deconstruction versus demolition, which would send at least a portion of the building materials to a building material salvage company to address the embodied energy comment that Ms. Beeky had. The other thing I want to say is I appreciate you providing the energy model. I think it helps provide context to show what you are voluntarily bringing to the table to make this building much more high performance than it would be if you were to just meet regulatory requirements. One thing I do want to state, though, is the reference to a near net zero building I'm getting increasingly uncomfortable with, only because while this building is going to perform significantly better than a traditional building, it will not be anywhere near a net zero building, which is okay. I don't want to say that in a disparaging way. My only concern is that we're trading on nomenclature that's a little bit inaccurate in this particular case. I commend you for what you have brought to the table, I think, from an energy perspective. You are, you're doing everything that you can to try to make this as high performance as possible. So come on, join me.
All right. Any other questions for the petitioners before I open the public comment? Seeing none, I'm going to open the public comment right here. Please introduce yourself. You got three minutes.
Hello, my name is Frank Arden. I live in, own a house at 326 East Fifth Street. Ms. Beeky brought up a point that I want to mention, and that is land use law does not allow economic hardship as an excuse for changes. It's not, it's a self-imposed condition, and you can't use economic hardship as a way of justifying variances. Now my prepared statement. I have four things that I'm super concerned about on this building. One is the blocking of eastern light to the neighbors to the east. The setback is only six feet, and you're going to block the entire access to sun to those building, to the building to the east. At least a 10-foot setback should be required there. I have an issue with the materiality of the building. It should fit in with the neighborhood, and currently it looks like a commercial building. To that point, there are two commercial buildings designed by Krieger that have the same black top, and that should be changed to at least a material that fits in with the residential quality of the neighborhood. The promise of net zero has already been brought up, I think, and the report talks about it, and it is clearly not net zero, so that shouldn't be a justification for the variances. It's not net zero, even though it is a more efficient building. The critical issue I want to talk about is the, are the street setbacks on Fifth and Troy. The most, that is critical because the intersection there is a difficult one. Fifth Street jogs at that point, and drivers are constantly confused at that intersection. There's a pedestrian crosswalk that people always ignore, drivers always ignore. We cross, my wife and I cross that crosswalk every day, and every day somebody blows through that intersection. By putting a building 14 feet from the gutter and 12 feet from the gutter on Fifth Street, you're going to be blocking the sightlines to the south, and it's going to make drivers pulling onto Troy, pull out with their nose onto Troy in order to see to the south in order to make a turn. That's a dangerous situation. There's an example of this on Altadena and 11 Mile Road that you can check out for yourself, a building which is approximately set back to the same distances as the one here. And I went to look at cars pulling out of that intersection on Saturday, and I was there for about a half hour. In the half hour, there were three cars that came there, not very many, but each one of them pulled their nose out into 11 Mile before they could see what was going on towards the east, and each time, well, twice, they had to rush to get out because they had gone too far. Cars were already coming, and people on 11 Mile had to put on their brakes. So that intersection is a problem, and you need setbacks there. Thank you.
Any other members? Right here. Please introduce yourself in three minutes.
My name is David Pacifico. I live at 707 Kaiser around the corner. I just want to make three points. I think it's poor planning. I think there's poor design, and I think there's some poor faith going on. The poor planning, we're, they're wanting to make this a PUD. It's a quarter acre on a simple zoning that's multifamily. A PUD, Plan Unit Development, should be reserved for a larger development that's more complex, like a mire that's maybe next to a school, that's next to some other uses, that, you know, where there needs to be some negotiation about the complexities of some of the zoning, not on a simple quarter acre. There's 10 deviations. That seems like, that's really a lot, including, you know, nine times the allowed number of units. That seems really outside the norm. Okay. The traffic coming out with no setbacks on Fifth Street where a car is crossing, where people are walking, is really bad design. It's, you're not protecting the health and safety of people. Somebody's going to get hurt. The third thing, I think it's a little poor faith on the whole net zero thing. If, when you're putting solar panels on the roof, you're collecting the energy at the time when you're not using the energy. So unless they have batteries or a room full of batteries for, what is it, 27 units, and how is that going to be metered individually on all the units? Are they all going to have batteries and their own set of solar panels? I just, I think, I think they're reaching with that. So that's all I have to say. Thanks.
All right, thank you. Any other members of the public would like to speak on this project? Right here. Please introduce yourself in three minutes.
Hi, yeah, so I'm Zane Dufour. I live at 415 Oak Run Court, just off of Rochester. So I'm trying to find the specific article that I had found about this, but according to, I think it was the, I should have like done a better job of having this. I was like, had it right before coming up here. Got too many tabs. So like basically, I mean, I don't really need like to pull up a specific article to cite this, but like apartment buildings just use way less energy per household than single-family detached housing. Like it's true that this won't be net zero, like that's fine, but it's kind of like a ridiculous idea to me personally to think that like that needs to be like some magical threshold in order to approve like critically needed housing that will also be much more energy efficient than the housing that currently exists across most of the city. I personally like the look of this development, but people, you know, beauty is in the eye of the beholder, I guess. I appreciate the inclusion of a couple of bike racks. I personally think it should be higher, and I know one of you mentioned that like you could consider adding that. And that's something that could probably even be added after construction, like if it seems like there's going to be enough demand for that. But yeah, I just think that you should definitely approve this. There's a lot of benefits to having, like there's a lot of positive externalities for the entire city when dense housing like this gets developed. There will be less people driving to downtown, less people taking up parking spaces, less traffic. Yeah, there's just a lot of benefits to having more housing near downtown, so I think this should be approved. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other members of the public like to speak on this project? Oh, all right. Please introduce yourself in three minutes.
So my name is Lisa Martin, and is it possible to change the view that's up here to the one that actually shows the building in comparison to the one that it backs right up next to? Because that's where I live, so this building will completely eclipse all of my light altogether. So I will have no light left. I right now have a view down Fifth Street that I can see from my kitchen window. It's beautiful. I've lived here less than a year. I moved here from downtown Ann Arbor, which they would never allow this to happen. By the way, this is laughable in my eyes, quite frankly. And I've invested money into my condo in order to make it, you know, someplace that I would like to live, and now this is completely diminishing my property value altogether. So just a few things to keep in mind, that it's not just about getting some transient multifamily housing in, but for those of us who actually thought we were going to stay there, there's no way I would stay here now. Absolutely not. And I can't get rid of it fast enough to get my money out of it to move. So, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Any other members of the public like to speak on this project? All right, seeing none, I'm going to close the public comment. I'm going to bring it back to the side of the table. I'm going to ask if the commissioners have any other questions for the petitioners or Mr. Twain? Seeing none? Okay, I do. So I have a couple questions for the petitioners just about the distance. I'm looking at the survey that you included, and the survey, I don't know what sheet it is, but I have a question about the distance from the curb to the building. Because the survey, it's not clear how far that is, and if the lot line is right at the sidewalk, which I don't know that it is under this survey, I did go out there and measure it myself, and it's not 14 feet, it's not 12 feet. It's less than that on both of those. So I'd like to know if the petitioner has confirmed this distance from the building to the curb.
Point of order, Mr. Chair. That's not something we're considering today. The commission, the Planning Commission has already voted on the site, existing site plan in terms of setbacks. I think the only things we're allowed to consider here are the things that are on our agenda, and the Assistant City Attorney will promptly correct me if I'm wrong.
I would like to know the answer to that. It was my, I have to say, it was my understanding that we could approve the PUD and approve the preliminary plan so they can bring it back with changes and we can consider it. I was not, I didn't know this was like a court of appeals where you're only dealing with the appealable issue.
I will happily stand corrected if I am incorrect.
Well, I'd be happy to address it. If you're looking for information you believe is correct, I think it's appropriate to ask and ask the petitioner to verify their numbers. I see nothing wrong with, I guess, that question. You know, it's a sealed drawing, and they're supposed to be correct, so the placement of it will be at the end of the day. So I don't know there's a correlation between the survey and your drawing other than...
Right, nor do I. Yes. I'm happy to try and answer. Did you answer your question? It looks right, but I can't tell you for sure because I don't see a dimension on there to confirm that.
As long as you're up there, let me ask about the gate. There was a question about the roll-up door. Quite frankly, I'm not so concerned about it, whether it's roll-up door or a gate, but I'd like you to explain how the gate works.
I believe the gate, does it have a fob on the car, basically? So when you drive up, you're headed? We haven't really gotten into the weeds on how the gate works, but typically what I see is that they hang a fob from the rearview mirror. When you pull up, the gate, the gate's activated.
And does the gate swing? Does it slide?
It's a one-armed band. It does this.
Oh.
Right?
Okay, on both sides then, because it's two, there's two pieces.
Yes, I believe so. Right, Ray? On the exit only? Okay, exit only.
Okay. All right, thank you. All right, those are my questions.
Perfect.
Now, Mr. Gantina.
One other quick question related to that, Kate. Does it have any sort of audible or visual alarm with it when it's operating?
It does.
All right. Any other questions? I have one from Mr. Twain. Again, this was not on the agenda last time. We did look, when we looked at this last time, we looked at the current zoning, which is multifamily, and we looked at the future land use, which is actually, the future land use is actually single-family, but we talked about, we didn't talk about the one-family overlay, which I didn't realize are right next to this property, and I was just curious. Tell me a little about what a one-family overlay is for. What does it accomplish?
I'll go back probably to the prior master plan adoption in 1999 and the subsequent zoning ordinance update, which included map updates and rezoning of properties as part of that process initially back in 2001. Most of the overlay districts were created when they, when the city took property that was zoned in some other district and downzoned it to one-family residential, meaning it got more restrictive. This, this area that's adjacent here could have all been multifamily previously under the 2001 ordinance. When it took it to one-family residential, in order to avoid non-conforming status, the overlay district identified what was there, said it could remain and stay there. It could be replaced in kind, but if it tried to get bigger, you would have to go through the appropriate process. So the overlay districts, and I'm not sure without checking this particular area, generally were to alleviate parcels that would have had a non-conforming status or stigma placed upon them.
Okay. All right, thank you. All right. Is there other discussion by the commissioners amongst ourselves? Questions? Anne Beeky.
I guess again, because I was not in the former meeting in January, and I took the time to listen to all the discussion during that meeting, I guess I have to vote no on this proposal because I think the building is overscale for that particular spot, and I appreciated the discussion, especially regarding the master plan, the current zoning, et cetera. I have a big problem with losing the setbacks that are in the mixed use as it's stated, as well as what's intended as single-family. And given our own study recently that at peak parking, our parking is only at 60% full in the downtown. We just had a study related about our parking. This is a position that's adjacent to the downtown. There's a lot of other empty spaces that would accept this building in its state without needing the PUD. And I deeply appreciate everything you're trying to do on the environmental and energy level on this building. And I would love to see this building go someplace else that's more appropriate. But for this spot, I feel like the scale needs to be something more in touch with the mixed use and single-family zone. And again, I referenced the townhouses there. I walk extensively in the city all around and I think this is just not quite the place for that. And we do have gratefully in this city, a very diversified housing stock and lots of spaces that are underutilized and echoing the person who had mentioned about the split tax rate on property taxes that would help us fill in some of our gaps where developers do tear down buildings and leave them empty, which we have several of those on our main street. So I'd love to see something a little smaller scale, reasonably environmentally friendly if possible, but I can't support this as it sits.
All right, thank you. Other comments? All right, is there a motion of some kind? I will, I will say this, I also can't support the project. For the reasons I think it doesn't, it's not consistent with the goals of the policies of the master plan as they sit today. We could change the master plan, but I'm looking at where we've been and where we're going. I'm not sure that this area, what this building, which I do like the building, I want to echo Ms. Biki's comments. I'd love to see this building built, but it's, it's built as if it's the central business district in terms of the setbacks and the massing. And it's not the central business district despite the fact it's adjacent. This is a transitional area and I don't, I don't know that that's where this block is going to go. So I don't think it's consistent. I also think the setbacks bother me quite a bit. I went around, I looked at a lot of other projects, including some of your other projects like Elevate, and 18 feet is, is about the minimum if things are setback. Even the Comedy Castle is setback, 18 feet. I don't see any buildings that are this tight to the curb. So that bothers me. I think that's a safety hazard. So due to number three and number six, not conforming, I can't support the project. Any other comments?
Yeah, I supported this project before and I will continue to do so. When you say we don't have any buildings that are built up to the sidewalk, I'm looking at the police, the fire station, a block up the street. So to say that there aren't any is, is not correct. And given the, the commercial development across the street, the massing of the church, the 18 phone company building, and given the innovation of this project, I liked it then, I liked it now, and I will be supporting this proposal.
All right, thank you. Other, Mr. Cantina?
I'll be supporting the project as well. While I'm sort of uncomfortable with the notion of you can take what you can get, we have rare instances where the applicant is voluntarily bringing amenities to a project that go over and above what they are required to bring. We passed our Sustainability and Climate Action Plan last year. I think this building and what's being proposed is a step in the right direction into accomplishing some of the greenhouse gas reduction goals of that plan. In terms of its massing and where it's located, it's, you know, it's essentially adjacent to the downtown area. And when I look down the rest of Fifth Street, albeit at a different scale, I see multifamily sprinkled in all the way down Fifth Street. Would I expect buildings of this scale to continue down Fifth? No, I think for me, this is kind of the border of where any multifamily buildings or higher density of that scale should sort of permeate east. But I think for that particular site and what exists on the rest of the block in terms of use, I don't necessarily have issue with that and I will support it based on some of the other innovative things that are being brought forward.
All right, thank you. Ms. Biki?
As far as requirements over and above, I mean, any PUD needs to prove itself as to be worthy, the exception for the zoning. And so, I mean, it's not really over and above anything specific because we can't unfortunately at the local government level impose energy efficiency because the state blocks us from doing that. So I appreciate that whole sense of it, but I still don't think it meets the requirement for that specific location. And again, we've had a long history of having a lot of PUDs. I think the effectiveness of that in the eighties and nineties, I understand why we had that. But as we look at our master plan now, we look at our spaces that are paved, we look at some of our empty lots in other locations, I don't think this is a fair trade for that location.
All right, other, thank you, other comments or a motion of some kind?
I'll just remind, this is a recommendation to the City Commission for their action. So there is a suggested, suggested resolution there based on an approval simply because the planning commission had approved it on, on a preliminary basis. But the, again, this is a recommendation to the City Commission.
So the motion would be to make a recommendation with these contingencies or other contingencies? Because people can make whatever motion they want.
I guess I make a motion to deny.
And I will second. Is there discussion on this motion? All right, I think this is probably worthy of a roll call vote and so we'll start with Ms. Biki.
Yes.
No?
No. I'm no.
And I'm a yes. So the motion does not pass?
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve?
Is there a second?
Or to recommend this to the City Commission?
I'll second.
Okay, second. Let's get a clarification. Is there, are there, the, you're recommending it with the contingencies that are in the recommendation. There's one that's different, as Mr. Twink pointed out. Just want to make sure that's.
I'm sorry.
Are you, are you addressing that in your motion?
Which one?
Oh, I'm sorry, he does have it. You have the barrier gates in here?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry, my mistake. I thought you said he wasn't. Okay, never mind. Okay, with the contingencies.
With the contingencies as submitted.
Okay, understood. All right, any discussion on this? Okay, seeing none, we'll do it again. Start at the end.
Uh, no.
Yes?
No.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, motion passes. Congratulations.
No, they still have to go to City Commission.
Well, they can congratulate him, they got the recommendation, right?
One step further.
Okay, very good. Next. All right. All right, the next order of business is the site plan for SP 230304. Mr. Twain?
Big day for Krieger Cloud.
Soon as I get it up here. All right. What you have in front of you is a request to add a addition to an existing building on the south side of Lincoln. East Lincoln, the property is zoned mixed use one. They're proposing to add about 2,000 square feet of office area to the west side of the existing building that runs along the property. The building is at its height, at the rough line with the addition, the tallest point is 23 and a half feet, which is under the ordinance requirements. The building in its totality after the addition would be some 10,200 square feet approximately. Terms of the staff recommendations or contingencies to go forward, the site, given the building square footage, the known and proposed uses, they would need a parking variance. So the first one relates to a condition that the zoning board of appeals would be required to grant that off-street parking variance.
And it's two, that's two spots?
No, there's, there's 37 spots that they would need. The site plan has 26. So it's actually 11. The petitioner's plan indicated that they were 35 short. Staff's calculation was they were 37. So there's a difference of what's shown on the plan and what's staff saying they need. The landscape plan is depicted and shown on the site plan. The planning commission does have discretion of, in terms of whether that, what's proposed by the petitioner is sufficient. They are proposing six-foot aggravates along the east property line. The south portion of that backs up to residential. That's the only place where screening is technically required, given the zoning districts of the other points of property lines are similar. But if the landscape plan is sufficient, you do have the discretion to accept it as, as depicted. All of the other conditions that we've listed are basically our standard contingencies regarding exterior lighting, any signage, either having to comply or coming back in front of planning commission for necessary variances. And then compliance with the other city codes and ordinances for building code and et cetera.
All right, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Twain? All right, seeing none, we'll call up the petitioner. And please introduce yourself again and tell us why you're entitled.
I'm busy, everybody. Jason Krieger, Krieger Architects, 2020, East 11 Mile, hopefully 400 East Lincoln. We'll see how this all goes over the next couple of meetings. I'm joking around. We've had a business in Royal Oak for, you know, many years, since I think 2009 is when we bought the first building. And then six years ago, seven years ago, we moved to 2120 East 11 Mile. And, you know, all along the way, we've, we've improved our properties. And if anybody has been by our building, you'll see that, you know, we maintain a very nice property. We take care of it. We, we literally manage it like our own home. We truly do, because we're probably there more than our, our own home. And so what really happened over time was we started to need more room for employees. Not so much that we're staffing up like, you know, going crazy. I think we're at a really good level. So is Jeff. Oh, by the way, Jeff Clatt, my partner in there. We have two of our key architects, Ryan and Ray, are here. This one, see how this goes, I guess. And anyways, I think a lot of it too was, and I'm not going to try and go too long in a speech, but it's like, you know, COVID and the events, what happened with the world. And what we found is that what we really want is more space, more room for our employees. We have a total of 24 people. 15 people are in the office. Everybody else is really at home. It's hybrid workspace. What happened is we went from meeting daily with clients to 95% of the meetings, now we're all Zoom. So just the world changed. So in these plans, you'll see that we have like an open work area and we just got a furniture plan back and it's, it's not packed full of workstations. It's some workstations, seating areas. It's, we just want room for our people. We want outdoor space for our people. And so we've been looking for a while and we looked at a couple of different buildings and then our broker said, hey, I found your, your new home. And I, I've, I've lived down Batavia since 99, which is right around the corner, so I know the area very well. And then I lived on Knowles just north of here up until three years ago. So we know this area very well. I'm like, that building, you kidding me? Like it's like a, it's like a, like a needle, you know, there's no room. So I went out there for the heck of it and I looked at it and I didn't realize that there was all this land along the side. And that's what did it. I was like, oh my God, Jeff, we can do something great here. You know, we have this outdoor space and picnic areas, this and that. And then turns out that there's some potential tenants in the back. So our big vision is Krieger Cloud would take about 6,000 square feet. We would have, we have some renderings in a presentation that we could pull up at the back end and it would have more lounge area, outdoor, you know, areas where we can congregate. You know, if we are doing staff meetings, it's more, you know, friendly. We can have outdoor areas for events, because we always have events, but we usually go to a bar somewhere local and we can do some stuff outside, which would be great. In the floor plan, you'll see that we have a bike and/or scooter room. So one of the things we really want to have is a spot for like a bike, probably bikes. We want to do those bird scooters. We'll see how that goes. They can get wrecked, it'd be dangerous. But we want staff to be able to ride their bikes into town, take their bike to Holiday Market. You know, we try and encourage, you know, involvement in the downtown. You know, it's, we were closer before. We moved out, out by I-75 and we're really excited to come back into the downtown. So, you know, basically, you know, one thing I want to, I want to talk about is the parking. So there is, per the ordinance, I think, I always thought it was nine, but I guess it's, I think you said 11, Tim. So, you know, we need about 15 spots. There's tenants in the back, the very rare tenant, Shadow Art, I think is their name, is a window tinting company. And if you ever go by there, you don't see more than two cars. They do have an overhead door. Then there's two other spaces that right now we're going to white box. And what we're hoping for is another creative group or an office. And total would be about, you know, 1,200 square foot a pop. So I mean, I think 10 spaces is a little excessive. But the reason why, it's not the ordinance is wrong, it's just that it's doing a gross, right? It's taking the area that you see. As far as our space goes, there's one more, maybe if you go back, Tim, if you could go back to the original submittal? I just want to run this by everybody. The original submission, we had a color-coded square foot floor plan that showed where everything was calculated per the ordinance. But it's fine. Bottom line is, you know, per the ordinance, the way it's written, I think, oh, there it was. It's calculating corridor, the blue is what it's calculating. And I guess maybe even more because we were off. But, you know, it's calculating conference rooms, corridors, areas where people who are in there would be there anyways. So that's where we felt like, you know, things were a little skewed. And so we feel very comfortable about the parking, to be honest. This is an owner-occupied building. We wouldn't go there if we thought that there'd be a problem. And across the street on Lincoln, by the power lines, there's a bunch of parking that's never used. So for some reason, if it's like, you know, they say don't build the church for Easter Sunday, but if it's ever Easter Sunday, I'd park over there by the power lines. And it wouldn't, it wouldn't impede on any residents or anything like that. We did hand out letters to all of the neighbors within, you know, 300 feet or so. We had an open house, two of them at our office. Only one evening, a couple showed up. They were in favor. In her words, she said that I had tears of happiness, right? Did she say that? I had tears of happiness that this was going in there because there have been three other variance requests, my understanding, in this property. And I think just the current owner, you know, they're busy. I think they're in the middle of a bunch of things. So she aired some grievances. Jeff and I said 100%, you know, there's a dumpster that's on the southeast corner. So we're going to work with them on screening it, you know, again, we're good neighbors. We make sure we are. So that's, that's, that's really it. So our proposal this evening is to hopefully get site plan approval, knowing that we have to still go get a variance. We get that. That's at our risk. And, you know, we think it'd be a wonderful spot, frankly. And I mean, if we can look at a couple of the renderings really quick, Tim, let's just show everybody what we're doing. So you see the addition that's on the west, that's going to be the, the work area. You know, the goal there is to, again, we really want that to be just screened with vegetation. We want there to be a wonderful spot for employees. We have our conference room in the front. We are showing a rain garden right now. We really want to incorporate that. We think that'd be really cool. We're working with our landscape architect. We got some soil boring done. We don't have any reports yet. So we're trying to do some cool stuff. And then you can see the big patio on the back there. So we'd have some nano walls that would open up and we can go out there and enjoy it. And then beyond that would be, there's the lounge area. So that's just open space for people who already work there or if we have a staff meeting with 10 or 12 people or something like that.
Is that it? That's Jeff?
Did a good job.
Thanks. Well, we'll see. So that's our, that's our spiel, I guess. We're here for questions.
All right, Ms. Biki?
Just a point of clarification for the parking. So, so the amount of parking that is required where the ordinance is, I'm sure it's in there somewhere, that number. You feel very confident with the parking as it is kind of laid out now for the building, you're going to keep it as it is and that's sufficient? That's what I'm understanding, correct?
That's correct. And if I may add to that, on the northeast corner, we're almost viewing about three spaces as land banked. If we get in a pinch, we could, we could modify that and, you know, very easily to do. It's just, we're just proposing to leave it for right now. We did look at doing parking all the way around the building. We actually did look at going up. But to pave all the way around the building, we only gained, I think it was six or seven spots. You know, and so we just said, that's crazy. We'd rather have the green space and things like that.
I'm very supportive of having just enough parking, but not too much parking. Especially if you're in a proximity to the downtown and maybe some of your employees even live within walking or biking distance. The only other comment I wanted to add is with, with the green space and the lawn you have, and this is again, not something we'd require per se, but again, native plant garden, you know, stuff that works well with the soil, no modifications, less lawn, no chemicals, would be much appreciated and in line with our sustainability plan. Personally, I like, like the design and I think it stays within the footprint well and gives you an opportunity to do something custom in a spot that it won't encroach on neighbors like the last one.
Exactly. We love it. We're working with the landscape architect right now and that, the charge that we gave him and he kind of dug it is, you know, we said, we want to be as natural as possible around the building to make it feel like there's this like little.
around the building, to make it feel like there's this, like, little modern building with this natural, you know, foliage and everything around it. So I think it'd be a good, you know, contrast.
Anybody down here? Mr. Grantina.
So I guess I just want to make a statement around sustainability, in the sense that one of the most sustainable things you can do is adaptive reuse, so the fact that you're taking an existing building and essentially utilizing what's there. We had a conversation earlier about embodied energy. You know, the embodied energy that's in this building will maintain and continue on useful life. So I'll be in support of the project from that standpoint, in the sense that I think what you brought to the table, even with the parking deficiency, again, I think our parking standards might be a little bit outdated. I would not be in favor of creating more impervious surface on this site for additional parking. The fact that you've maintained green space, you're creating sort of flex indoor/outdoor space for the employees, the proposed rain garden, I think what you brought is a solid project.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, I mean, I look at it, it looks really nice. It's almost a few, you know, the owner's an architect, and it's crazy. So I appreciate the consideration you made to parking. I think there, you know, this building's up for sale. Folks could have bought it and did a lot of different things with it and reconstructed the property, probably even within, you know, the current zoning ordinances that would not be as, you know, appealing in so many different ways. And just the fact that, you know, you understand, you have 24 employees, the parking spots are the right amount. At any given time, you have people on the road, you have people homesick, you have people working from home, you know? And you're the one that has to live with the consequence. So you wouldn't design something that would create a problem for your folks. And the win that we get as a community is that we get a, you know, more green space, less runoff, a better-looking building, higher tax base. And certainly an activation in an area on Lincoln that, you know, helps, you know, local business and things of that nature. So even though we're not approving a parking variance per se here, it does fit into the design and, you know, how the building looks and functions, and especially how it blends with the neighborhood. So really nice design.
Thanks. Commissioner Douglas.
Just a quick question. While we cannot count public street parking as part of, or take that into consideration in these projects, there is street parking on Lincoln, right?
Correct.
So there's that as well.
Yeah, I lived, like I said, in that area for probably 15, 18 years. I can't do the math right now, but I never saw anybody park across from those power lines, even when the brewery first opened. So it's not, I'm just, I agree with you. It's there. That's what it's there for, so.
All right. I do have a question. The arborvitae on the east side, those are going to be inside the existing, I guess that's poured concrete wall or something?
That's correct. I think we own the wall, actually. It looks like it on survey.
Okay, but you're leaving the wall and adding the arborvitae.
That's correct, yeah.
Okay. And I, yes, the parking is not so much our issue, but I would say you've got employee lounge and hallways and common areas and conference rooms, and what happens is people are in their office, and they go down the hallway to meet in the conference room where somebody comes. You don't stay, it's within the realm of possibility, you could turn that conference room, you could turn the employee lounge into an office someday, and I'm sure that's why they do the parking the way they do.
Sure.
But the way people use offices like this, you move from one space to another, so you're not adding people.
That's exactly right, yeah.
So I will also be in favor of the project, but I just want to say, I responded to this design. I really liked the design. I hope you get it. I'll be in favor.
Thanks.
All right. Any other discussion, questions for the petitioner or a motion?
Mr. Grantina.
I will move to approve the cycling.
With the state of...
With the state of contingency.
All right. Is there a second?
I second.
Second by Ms. Beatty. All right. Any further discussion on this? All right, seeing, oh, go ahead.
I always say one more. A shout out for this beautiful micro forest you could even put there, native trees.
Perfect, thank you. All right. I am going to call for the voice vote. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
I know there aren't any opposed, so congratulations.
All right, well, thank you very much. Everybody, good night.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
All right. Next, site plan SP 230305 at 111 Northwest Street. Mr. Twink.
This site is on the northwest corner of Northwest in North Sherman. It's a triangular piece of property that's currently vacant. It is zoned in the mixed-use-two district. The petitioner is proposing to construct a parking lot that would be utilized by an adjacent business on the south side of Sherman Drive, the dry cleaning and tailor shop that's at 508 West 11 Mile. They're proposing to put in seven parking spaces with a 30-inch wall that basically surrounds the parking lot. That's basically the proposal. If the planning commission is comfortable with the configuration, the landscape plan, there is a motion there with the conditions, basically that they'll have parking within a front yard setback off Sherman, but that is at your discretion.
All right. Are there questions for Mr. Twink?
I do have a question.
All right.
So their driveway off Sherman is 30 feet wide, and that's legit?
At the property line, that's where it can be 30 feet wide.
Okay, thanks.
All right. And I also have a question here. If there is a variance here, then the screening has to be six feet, or is the 30 feet acceptable anywhere?
Well, it's at, you're really at your discretion in this particular occasion, so it's not really a variance.
Okay.
It's what you want to impose as a planning commission.
All right. They're asking for 30 inches.
That's their proposal.
Okay, very good. Is the petitioner here? Please come on up and introduce yourself and tell us why you're entitled to the relief you seek.
Good evening. My name is Nathan Robinson with Horizon Engineering. I'm the engineer on the project. And the owners are here as well of the property, in case you have any questions that I can't answer. But I'd be happy to answer any questions. Obviously, it's a tight site, so the objective is obviously not only to serve the parking needs of the other property to the south, but to that end, try and get as many parking spaces in there as we can, because the facility needs parking. Unfortunately, they have, I think, just two spaces in their parking lot. It's a very narrow, long building to the south. And what you see is as many spaces as we could get in. We tried different configurations. We tried a driveway access off of Northwest Street. We tried through driveways, coming off driveway off of each street. We've tried angle parking. We tried, you know, in one way and out the other way, and this was the best we could come up with in terms of trying to utilize the space for the number of parking and also still provide space to get in and at least provide some screening with the wall. And, yeah, that's where we are today.
All right. Are there questions for the engineer? Ms. Beatty.
Could you explain, again, he might have mentioned in the description, but the need for parking and kind of what the expected flow of the parking is in terms of, is it for people to stay parked, they're going to be coming and going, kind of what the need and demand is?
Sure. So that's for the employees? Or is it...
It is for the employees and the customers.
And the customers.
And what's the business again, sir?
It's a cleaners, the Rembrandt cleaners.
Okay.
I have a quick question. What are the hours of operation?
We open 10 to 7 on weekdays and 10 to 6 on Saturdays and 12 to 5 on weekends.
Okay, thank you. I have another question. Did you interface with the neighbor to the north at all about this?
She owns the property to the north.
We own that house.
Oh, you own the house?
Yes.
Okay.
So yes?
So yes. All right. Are there any other questions for the petitioner? Mr. Grantina.
So you mentioned the need for the parking was primarily for employees and customers. I'm looking at, I'm deciding right now, the parking spaces that are to the west, is that property not owned by you, or is that not available to you, I guess?
To the west of which site?
To the west of the cleaners, sorry, the existing business.
That is owned by the building that's west of that parking lot.
Okay, so it's not your parking. Based on that, where do your customers park today?
They park at that specific parking lot you spoke of, because we lease from a landlord that owns that parking lot.
I see.
So we lease from him, so our customers can use the parking space.
Other questions? All right. I can see, maybe some thoughts bubbling?
Yeah, and maybe it's a question, I mean, currently, right now, this is a non-permeable, or it's a permeable surface, right? It's grass and everything. I'm trying to find, my eyes aren't looking tonight, I don't know what it is. The materials for the parking lot itself, are you looking at standard just asphalt, concrete, or have you considered, given it's not a huge side, any sort of permeable pavement that would help with the reduction of stormwater going into the neighborhood?
No, we didn't look at anything permeable. It was intended to be just a standard, either concrete or asphalt. I don't know how the soils are at the site, so I'm not sure offhand if it was a permeable pavement, would that actually be of a benefit?
Yeah.
Obviously, there's a drainage layer with the permeable pavement, but still the soils beneath that need to be, you know, permeable in order to take the...
I mean, generally in this area, and this is my non-geological opinion, only based on knowing where the old Great Lake Cliff was, it's typically sand on that side, but I mean, you have to go, you have to spot-check it, but typically in that area it is sand.
Ms. Beatty.
I just have a follow-up question. So the parking that you have now that you're renting, is that landlord going to revoke that, and therefore your employees and customers can no longer use it? Or what is the, for us, the situation of paving more, if there's already pavement available and working well, is kind of a concern in terms of the sustainability, in terms of the permeability, as he had mentioned? And so why is that changing at this point?
The only reason we want...
The microphone, please?
Oh, could you come forward?
Oh, because of the recording, yeah.
The only reason that we are looking to make a parking lot is because the landlord is an older gentleman, and from what I see, he's looking to sell his properties. So if he sells his properties, and we've been working with him for over 30 years, and we have no access to parking, we will lose our business. Customers have no place to park.
Could you just state your name for the record, because you were in front of the microphone before?
Yeah. My name is Miriam Ayup.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions for the petitioner? Mr. Grantina.
So I'm looking at the sheet that depicts the cobblestone going between, basically, the paved area and the screening wall. We just talked about permeability. Would you be willing to consider using pervious pavers for that area of what's being proposed in an effort to kind of, I guess, direct your surface water runoff from the parking lot into those permeable areas that are on the perimeter of the lot, and sort of keeping it out of the municipal system to the extent that you can? Because you're already proposing essentially cobblestone, which is almost a pervious surface, would you, I guess, consider going all the way with actual permeable pavers designed into this?
Nathan. So you're referring to permeable pavers as part of the parking surface?
No, so in the area where you've got, sorry, in the area where you're indicating cobblestone finished between the paved area and the screening wall, sort of all the way around, replacing those cobblestones with pervious material and directing your stormwater runoff from the pervious lot with curb cuts and whatnot to all those perimeter areas, sort of as, you know, well, you're calling it cobblestone right now, but I guess making sure that you're actually using a pervious stone material to allow for that surface water runoff to hopefully get caught there to the extent that it can, before it has to go to the municipal system.
Yeah, I think that's an interesting idea, and I don't think we would be opposed to that. Like you mentioned, it would just take some curb cuts. We wouldn't want, in this case, to eliminate the curb entirely. I know sometimes with those, like, rain gardens and whatnot, we need the curb there to protect the bumper overhang, to protect the screen wall. But with the curb cuts introduced, as far as the material goes between the curb and the screen wall, what we were looking for there, so we weren't looking at it in terms of that, but now that you mention it, permeable, I want to say, actually, the cobblestone material will probably take on the water better than a permeable paver would, because there's just more void space. And just the aesthetics of it, I'm just thinking, you know, we've already, we already have a paved surface, obviously the parking lot itself taking up so much area, and then they have additional, basically, pavement outside of that. It may, aesthetically, I don't know how that would look. So we're trying to go with more of a natural product, but at least meeting the drainage needs. I would say, as long as the soils can support it, that'd be no problem to...
That's really what, I guess, my concern is, we're taking a 100% pervious lot and making it significantly impervious. So to the extent that we can sort of handle some of that stormwater runoff on-site, understanding we're probably not going to be able to capture all of it, but to the extent that we can handle as much of it as possible, just through some simple design modifications, is really what I'm looking for.
We would be happy to work with the engineering department and look at that option. The water has to go somewhere, this, and it was mentioned in the report from the planning department, that it needs to meet the stormwater requirements of the city, obviously. And stormwater detention was mentioned, so this, the size of this property falls below the threshold for requiring stormwater detention, so, and unfortunately, there is no storm sewer within the vicinity of this project, so we were looking at, basically, the parking lot just pitches out into the street right away. Been done before, it's the only option. But if we can, you know, either flatten areas or put curb cuts in, we have no problem. But again, as long as I think the soils can support that, sure, we could do that.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, and I don't know how we do it here with the approval. We can get a little guidance, but, you know, for me, yeah, obviously, you know, putting a stormwater detention in here would just be crazy expensive, and that wouldn't be our intent. But, you know, it is a, so when you look at the neighborhood and you say, hey, look, we're putting a parking lot, and totally understand the need and reason, like, totally empathize, but how do we kind of work that in in a way that, you know, balances the needs of the neighborhood, which increasingly in Royal Oak, it's been a number-one priority of us to reduce the amount of stormwater, because what's happened with increasing warming temperatures, is we have these severe storms, people's basements back up, and we're working, you know, tirelessly even to take an inch of water off the pavement. So to the extent that you could reduce, and I don't think with a lot this size and given where it's at, that it would break the bank to, you know, play well with the neighbors to ensure that the water, as much of it is retained on the property. That would be something that would, for me, would make me feel a lot better about approving this. I don't want to create a huge financial burden, but I think a little bit of investment on a lot this small, I think, would go a long way for the neighborhood.
Sure.
Turtin, come up.
At this triangle where this land is, and right to the north is the house that my daughter owns, there are no neighbors. Right across Sherman is our business, and there's nothing there except the house that my daughter owns and our piece of land. And right across the street is the business and the tailor shop.
Yeah, I'm more referring to the neighbors that are all on that drain line. So when we add more water to it, it infects, you know, like, within hundreds and hundreds of meters, because what happens is these lines fill up, and then it could be a neighbor, you know, 200 meters away that would get back up in their basement. you know, 200 meters away that would get back up in their basement, not necessarily individually caused by this product, by this project, but the preponderance of all the projects if we don't mitigate, you know, the surface areas. And I think, neighbor, I'm not talking necessarily adjacent, talking everybody that taps into those, and what's even worse, Royal Oak and the 12 other cities on the Coon Drain System, it's a combined system, so it's raw sewage and stormwater. So when your basement backs up, like the stormwater comes up when it fills up that line, it fills up a line that's also full of human sewage and which gets into people's homes and basements, and so we've been working really hard to mitigate it. And so, yes, I get what you're saying, but I'm thinking more the neighborhood, maybe.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Douglas.
Yeah, I just want to follow up on the cobblestone question. So is what you're, the cobblestones that you're proposing here, are they held in place with concrete, or are they just loose stones?
Just loose stones.
So that seems to me to address the, your goal. And again, as long as you, you know, created gaps that funnel water and grade it so that it funnels water into those spaces, I think we would accomplish what we want. Yes?
Are the, is it the design with the cobblestone, are they at level with the parking lot service, or are they above on the curb level?
Okay, so the current design is to have the top of the cobblestones meet the top of the curb. So what we would have to do in that case, obviously, with curb cuts is bring that down and have them level with the parking lot service or the gutter of the curb to allow water to get in there. The one comment I want to make is, so we haven't looked at it yet in terms of specifics, in terms, you know, grading and drainage and whatnot. If it gets approved, you know, we will work with engineering. The one point I want to make is that while we have no problem looking at it, and again, it partially depends on the soil types underlying the site, but also that the grades are sufficient that, that it'll work. In other words, we know that we can grade the parking lot and direct the water and push it where we want it to go, but we're hoping that the soils will absorb that water and take it underground where, you know, that's our goal. Obviously, the magnitude of the rainstorm is going to affect how much water is going to be shutting off the property, and so we have to look at it from the emergency standpoint is if the rainstorm exceeds what we're designing for, which we've seen, or weather conditions, if the ground is frozen, you know, this time of year when we get freeze thaw, freeze thaw, maybe there's snow melting, we get a rain. We want to make sure that when that sort of infiltration system, you know, fails, at least temporarily, what happens with the water? Where is the water going to go? Is there a route to overflow that water so that we don't have ponding? And then, like in this type of, in this season, we don't have icing, because, you know, we do have the screen wall, so there will be a little shade, sun's lower, some more chance for some of that water to freeze. Because there is no underground storm sewer, it would be easy just to have a pipe with a grate on it and say, okay, well, if the water rises to this elevation, just goes in the pipe, that's our overflow and the way it goes, but there is no underground storm drainage in this area. So any emergency overflow condition would have to be a cross-grade. So we haven't looked at it in that much detail yet, just looking at it right now on the spot. If we're sending the water from the parking lot to these areas, the overflow condition is not going to be taking it back into the parking lot. It's going to have to go somewhere else, and it's surrounded by a wall on all sides, so we may have to put openings in the wall. So in the worst-case scenario, if the water overflows, it'll go through the wall. I don't know if that would present a concern with the sidewalk along Northwest Street specifically because the sidewalk is in close proximity to the wall. But those are the things that I'm, it's going through my head right now as I'm thinking how we would engineer that. I'm not only looking for the initial objective to get the water into the ground, but what happens in the worst-case scenario when that system, at least, I don't want to, using the word "fails" is the wrong way of putting it, but in the emergency situation where we, the water, the quantity of water exceeds what we're designing.
Mr. Cantina.
I fully understand what you're saying. I think in those extreme weather events, though, you're still, to the extent that you can, mitigating the amount that would naturally just have to flow to the street gutter system. Without putting any provisions in for onsite capture, 100% of that water, even in an extreme event, is going to the street system because there is no other medium for it. So understand the concern, but I think you're actually helping the issue if you were to provide any level of onsite drainage, even in that extenuating circumstance.
Gary.
Ms. Bicki.
I'm not sure, I'm not sure why we don't commonly use these in the U.S., maybe again because it's not mandated as of yet, but in Europe, you see all the time the bricks that have the grass growing through. And when I look around the surround of your cobblestone, if you had instead of that, the native grasses, tall native grasses, you don't have to cut them, they just stay there, you know, they have deep roots. But some, I'm inclined to want to support to support the business that's been in Royal Oak a long time, but the impermeability of this particular presentation, I think, is not quite there for what I think would be appropriate for the site. And so, again, I don't know from an engineering perspective what would be the most appropriate, but natural materials and something that would integrate more permeability and plant material, quite frankly, moss growing through bricks or whatever, because it sounds like it's not a lot of in-and-out traffic. And so something that would be more, again, simply permeable, because otherwise it's a tough call to put that in the front for me, even though I'm more inclined to support. But again, the materials presented, I'm not, it concerns me.
Commissioner Douglas.
Mr. Twink, to what extent can we dictate this?
Well, you would have to, the relief that they're asking for, that you have discretion over, is technically to put some parking in the front yard setback. I believe it's along West Street is what we indicated in that regard. I believe the storm detention ordinance requires at least 6,000 square feet of, in order to require somebody to even provide detention. If I read right, this site's about 3,300 square feet.
That's correct.
So it's not even half, it's a little over half the size. It would be exempt from the stormwater detention ordinance.
So they don't really have to do anything. And if they're willing to listen to our advice, consider grading it in a way that some of that water maybe seeps through the cobblestone areas and we get a little bit of, you know, savings there based on permeability. I mean, I would be inclined to let them, you know, work with staff to, well, if they're going to put cobblestones there anyway, whether or not the soil underneath is sand or clay, the water's going to go where it's going to go, and I don't think...
It won't. Because it's six inch, right now, the way it's designed, it's six inches above, so that curb is taking the water up to the street.
If he lowers the cobblestones.
Well, correct me if I'm wrong, but your note indicates that there's no, no stormwater existing in close proximity in the parking lot shall be graded to drain into North Sherman Drive. So the intent under your note is to drain it all out into Sherman Drive.
That was the original intent, yes.
So if you don't want that to occur, there's got to be some modification to it. I don't know, because I don't see in elevations, whether you can even raise it up to get it to drain north-south.
Right.
Because if I remember the site, it's pretty low.
It is a little low.
There's got to be a lot of dirt coming in or something coming in to raise it.
Yeah, I'm not sure how much organic and topsoil material is out there. Obviously, that would be stripped out, but there will be a little bit of fill. If the parking lot does pitch all the way to Sherman Drive, then we need to pitch that up a little bit, so there will be a little bit of fill. So in addition to taking out the organic material, obviously with the pavement, there's going to be base materials, so we have to bring in that material anyway, so it's probably going to be a little bit more, you know, in addition to that. But because we have the screen wall, that wall can also act as a retaining wall, and we're not talking, you know, feet. We're talking in the order of inches. I would say probably nine to 12 inches max, grade differential between one side and the other. But yes, that was the original intent, was because that was the only option, you know, again, not considering permeable materials, but just, you know, the traditional stormwater management, bringing it into the street right-of-way. It was our only option. We just, we had another project similar to this, just 600 West 11 Mile, so to the south and just to the west, where, similar situation where there was just no storm sewer, and the existing site was, I think, 100% impervious. And through the redevelopment, it ended up being 90%, but all of the stormwater just sheet drained out into the street right-ofways because that was the only option. So sometimes that's what we're stuck with. Again, we have no problem looking at permeable materials like the cobblestone and whatnot to try and get that into the ground, but we'd like to have the opportunity to work with the staff to make sure that that's, will function as designed.
I would just make the comment. I think, I think this was a very good idea there, Mr. Cantina, that you threw out there. However, I do feel that it's tough for an engineer to design under pressure on the spot in front of us, and I think that if you're going to, I'm just going to convince myself here, if you're going to pitch it northeast to southwest, it seems to me you have some opportunities to draw off water into the areas on either side of the driveway, which are going to have cobblestones. So if we have a petitioner who's saying, I'm going to work with this, and really, the only increased cost for doing something like that would be the engineering time for our engineer to work on it, because cutting through the curb and, I mean, that's not going to cost anything. So I feel like if the petitioner's going to work with the staff to see if they can retain some of the water, I think that's a step in the right direction, since they don't have to do it. Any other comments? Chair cannot make a motion.
All right. I'll try. So I'm going to move approval of the site plan with the contingencies listed and that the petitioner will, how do I go here? Tim?
Well, I would think that we would simply address, we got storm detention, we'll work with city staff to maintain as much water on site as practical.
Well put.
Because I have no idea how much they could keep or not keep.
Right. Yeah, it's got to be practical and reasonable. It can't be like a million dollars.
I think that's fair. You're earning your salary here today, but that would be my motion.
All right. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Cantina. Is there any discussion? Ms. Bicki.
I just want to make a comment that I will support under these conditions, and I appreciate any efforts to, again, improve the permeability, and I appreciate your long-term business here and hope it continues to go well. And then for ourselves on our ordinance, because of our stormwater issues and what we're trying to achieve, maybe we need to change the 6,000 and lower it, because I think we, it makes it easier for people to bring forward the right proposals if we have more strict, a more strict ordinance, given the fact that we know this rainwater is such a problem, and it's not just a problem for the immediate neighbors, it's a problem for the region, the whole region, and so it's something that really has to be addressed collectively. So if you could do your best to make it permeable, think about plant materials, et cetera, we appreciate that.
Any further comments or discussion? All right. I'm going to call for the vote on the motion to approve the site plan with the stated contingencies and the intention to work with staff to retain as much water on that site as practical. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? None opposed. Congratulations. Good luck to you.
Thank you.
All right. What's next? Is there, is there next? Oh, Brownfield.
Well, I would suggest you make a motion to adjourn the planning commission meeting and then call over the Brownfield.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. The planning commission meeting is adjourned.